We don't really have any preview music or anything like that. There's just, it's just me. It's your superintendent of schools, Scott Smith. We're going to, this is our very first virtual town hall meeting that we've held. We did hold several town hall meetings earlier in the year when we could come together face to face. But obviously where we are now and moving forward, we're going to have to do this virtually. Now, perhaps you'd seen meetings where they've done, they've used Zoom to do meetings like this. We really don't want to have that as our very first meeting because we've got a lot of information to cover. We want to make sure that you have access to and you can see the screen as we go through this PowerPoint presentation. If you did access the town hall meeting from our webpage, you will see that there is a link on that page to then go through and submit questions. So we have had the link up and live since, I believe, yesterday. And we've got about 40 or 50 questions so far. So as we're going through this, if you have questions, please just submit them. A lot of the questions that have been submitted so far really are going to be, that's the purpose of what we're, that's the purpose of the town hall, that's the purpose of this presentation today. Now, we've scheduled about an hour to have this virtual town hall and to go through this. And normally, we won't be doing such a long presentation, but because there's just been so many things going on, we figured it was really good to start at the beginning and kind of walk everybody through it. So the very first is, your input is exceptionally important for all of those viewing. You are our stakeholders, our parents, our students, our community members. We do want you to be able to ask questions that tinyurl.com SMCPS Recovery 2020 is a great way to put your questions in. There are going to be many, many questions. We will not be able to answer all of them, but every question asked will be then forwarded to the Safe Return Planning Work Group so that they can incorporate that into their work. So today, we're going to talk about three Rs, the big three Rs. Recovery, redesign, and then ultimately return. When we talk about recovery, we're going to talk about what we've done so far up to here. And then with redesign, we're going to talk a little bit about what we're doing as a system to be prepared for what the return may look like. So where have we been? Let's start with where have, where have we been? In March, we very abruptly ended traditional attendance at schools and face-to-face learning. We had two weeks to put a plan together so that we could provide some form of continuity of learning from that March date until, and then it kept on pushing out. It was originally going to be the right after spring break, and then after that, it was going to be the middle of May, and then after that, it was going to be the end of the school year. So we had to have very flexible plans, recognizing that we didn't really know what the next week would bring. So what did we do? We did the very best we could with the tools that we had on our shelf. So we already had some online learning platforms. We already had single sign-on for students through Clever. And so what we did was we married those two things together, and we looked at the two most robust platforms of instructional material that we had. Edgenuity and Imagine Learning. Edgenuity for our students who are grade six through 12, and Imagine Learning for our kids K through five. And for all the parents who are tuning in, you know this really, really well. You know that when they, when the students did a single sign-on with Clever, they went right to the Edgenuity platform or the Imagine Learning platform. When they went into the Edgenuity platform, they found each one of the courses, Math, Science, English, and Social Studies, that their child was originally enrolled in. And when they clicked through that, they saw content that would carry them through the last marking period of this particular year. At the elementary level and with Imagine Learning, with standards-based instruction and assessment, it was a little more challenging to put that together, but we did grab standards-based learning in the Imagine Learning platform, and we presented that. For our students in accelerated coursework such as Advanced Placement or STEM, we kept Google Classrooms open so that there could be the advanced level of learning materials that the students were accustomed to. Imagine Learning and Edgenuity are not ideal. They are what's called asynchronous platforms, which means the content is preloaded, and the student accesses the content at their own time, at their own pace, and they move through that content. Honestly, it was probably the very best that we could provide, given what the time that we had, and it did work fairly well. There were student-specific courses, there were video tutorials, there was progress monitoring, so teachers could know where the children are as they moved through. Administrators could see who was logging on and when they were logging on, and how long they were logging on for, and how they were moving through. So it did give us a snapshot of what our students were doing while they were out of school. Teachers made connections with students through email, and we moved through each successive thing, all the way till the end of the year and school concluded. The use of the online platforms, over 90% of students access the online resources. Over 90% of the students access those platforms. Of those 90%, about 94% actually completed all of the assigned coursework. That is quite a testament. If parents, if you got the letter from me, that's a testament to you, parents. That's a testament to you in your homes for working with your children to move through that content and to help them in every way possible because you all had to suddenly become teachers. And while it might be easy to teach third grade English Language Arts and fourth grade math, even fourth grade math, though, it's a little bit challenging. For those students who were enrolled in advanced level Algebra II, Precalculus, Calculus, well, we made it through. We made it through to the end of the year. What's really important to recognize here, and I know there's been some conversation, is I don't want people to be misled to believe that 90% of our students have access to computers and reliable, online, high-speed internet. The platforms that we set up were platforms that were asynchronous and could be run on a laptop, on a tablet, even in some cases, a smartphone. That flexibility allowed for people to be able to access in whatever device that they had. Moving forward, we're going to have to address how we make sure that equitably kids have access to online learning. No matter what, 10% of our students didn't have access to and instead were mailed print resources. So for the last quarter of their, of their school year, they worked through paper packets. They did have contact with teachers through email, but if they didn't have consistent email and access to that email, they were really challenged. And that's the reality of St. Mary's County. That's the reality of the state of Maryland. That's the reality of the United States. There is a gigantic digital divide between the haves and the have-nots. And nobody's come up with a way that we're going to bridge that successfully. It's going to take a great deal of money. Where are we now? So that's what we did. We worked through all of that stuff. I will tell you that also where we were, we were able to serve 400,000 meals to kids. We were able to provide some form of instruction to all of our students. We were able to do graduation, which honored the kids as they went through in the class of 2020. We did do a lot of things right. So where are we, where are we now? So that's where everybody at school has ended. We're not trying to catch your breath. We're looking at the next two months. What's going to happen next? Well, first, understand that St. Mary's County is part of the state of Maryland. And within the state of Maryland, within the state of Maryland, the governor decides where we're going through this. He has put forth the Maryland Strong Roadmap to Recovery. I feel pretty confident that most of you will have heard of it. If you have heard of it, but you haven't read it, you should really read it. It impacts every aspect of living in the state of Maryland. We were shelter, we were stay-at-home, and then we tentatively went into stage one in late April, early May. In the end of May, we went to a version of stage two, and as we've been in June now, we are pretty much in stage two. And stage two, as we well know, is we're trying to get back to some level of normalcy. Things are open at 50% capacity. If you are out, you have to wear a face mask, you have to have social distancing. All of these things will obviously be the new normal for quite some time to come. But we are in stage two. So the first part is where are we now? We look to the governor and the governor's decision as to stage one, stage two, and we all hope for stage three. Stage three is when we get back to life as we knew it before March 13th. So the governor has a plan with Maryland Strong. MSD has a plan that they've been working on since May, and that plan is called Maryland Together, Maryland's Recovery Plan for Education. This plan was in draft all through May, and in the first week of June, it was published and put out still in draft form. It has been modified several times, and just yesterday, so Tuesday, June 23rd, yesterday, it was presented again, and it was updated. With its update, it gave some additional content, and the stuff that really matters to us is that it talks about what is required in a recovery plan explicitly, and it gives a due date of August 14th for it to be posted to every single school's front-facing system webpage. Obviously, we're going to have to have much more work done and a plan done before August 14th, a week and a half before schools were originally scheduled to traditionally start. The plan details 13 requirements for opening schools in the fall. And then the biggest reveal was that it introduced this graphic for reopening Maryland Schools, the K-12 Decision Matrix. So how are we going to decide? When I say we, how is the state superintendent going to decide that schools have been cleared to reopen in some fashion? So Maryland Strong on one side, Maryland Together on the both sides, they're supposed to be working together. And so the report itself, and when we're done, we're going to make sure that that's available for everybody. I know that it's been tweeted out and things such as that, but it's a 70-page document. There are 70 pages of information within that plan. The newest information and the most relevant to probably everybody viewing here today is the strategies for reopening process. It starts with a preamble on page five of the plan, where it says that the reopening of schools is the decision of the state superintendent in concert with the governor, the state board, the Maryland Department of Health, and other Maryland agencies. Once that decision is made by Dr. Salmon, who also made the decision to close, then we will move into what we have to have in place to be able to get kids back to some form of normalcy. Buried in that, and with the state's presentation, there is the Reopening Maryland Schools K-12 Decision Matrix. This is where it kind of starts to get confusing, okay? This, this matrix outlines three steps for reopening schools. The governor's plan has three stages. MSD has three steps. Ultimately, we're going to, you can't really read that graphic. Can you read that graphic? You probably can't read that graphic. Let's, let's see if we can kind of expand that graphic a little bit. So step one, step one of the Maryland's Recovery Return to School Plan is that we look to the governor's office. We look to Governor Hogan to determine where we are as a state, whether we're in stage one, stage two, or stage three. If we are in stage one, all school activities are closed and all learning is virtual. If we are in stage two, where we are currently in stage two, some in-person activities may commence in accordance with the governor's gating and social distancing measures. So that's where we are this summer. We're in stage two. Stage three is when we get back to some form of normal, we can fully resume normal operations of schools. I don't know, stage three, if you've read the, if you've read the Roadmap to Recovery Maryland Strong, stage three is dependent upon some big-ticket items, like a vaccine and consistent therapies that can be used throughout the, throughout the United States to mitigate people who have indeed contracted COVID. Big things. So step one, that's where we are. Step two is the conversation that we're going to be having today, because step two says that when we're in step two, each local system must meet the requirements for opening schools as outlined in the Maryland Together, Maryland's Recovery Plan for Education. They say that you have to, we have to develop and submit a plan, we have to incorporate equity throughout the plan, we have to have a local education recovery stakeholder group, which we'll be talking about later. We have to, once we get the kids back in, the plan has to identify the gaps that have been created and how we're going to, what we're going to do about it. The plan has to tell, has to inform how we're going to do IDEA, 504, ADA, how we're going to be compliant with all of those laws that govern. There has been no waiver for public schools in the United States from USDE as far as those requirements, and there's been no waiver from the Maryland State Department of Education. So all of that has to be incorporated into whatever plan we do. We have to outline and follow all of the health procedures as they're outlined by MSD, by the Maryland Department of Health, by the Centers for Disease Control, as well as our local health officer, and that would be Dr. Mina Brewster. We have to ensure safe transportation for all students. That's a real challenge. We'll come back around to that. And then ultimately, there's an accountability measure. Whatever plan we put forward, we have to be able to demonstrate that we are taking attendance for kids. And that's attendance if they're in our building or attendance if they are learning virtually. Step three, woo-hoo, step three. This is where, if we've satisfied all of those things, we, the local school superintendent working in concert with local government and the, and the health officer, can start talking about students and staff re-entering the buildings, students re-entering the buildings. Schedules, calendar modifications, delivery of instruction, they're completely the discretion of each school system. And so that's really where the bulk of our plan needs to, needs to go. We obviously have to have health and safety measures that are outlined by the governor and the Maryland Department of Health, and then depending upon, tailor that to each local jurisdiction. Because life in St. Mary's County is different than life in Baltimore City, Montgomery County, Howard County, Prince George's County. So the third step gives us the flexibility to be able to tailor a plan that takes into account the challenges and specific elements of each particular county. So we need to make a plan, and we need to move forward. Do not think for one second, for the last 112 days that we've been out, we haven't been planning. We've been planning every single minute of every single day. And every single minute of every single day, that plan is modified as new information becomes available, as new information is shared with us as the school systems, and then we share it down the line. Throughout this entire pandemic, there hasn't been a great deal of information shared with local school systems until it is shared with everybody. So we all watch Twitter at the same time to see what the next thing is. We don't know what's going to be in the governor's announcement until he gets up in front and does Twitter. We don't know what the state superintendent is going to do until she goes and talks to the state board of education. So making a plan and moving forward, we have to plan, and we have been planning. So these are all the requirements that need to be met for reopening schools. We have to, we have to have a plan, we have, it has to be approved, it has to be posted. Equity has to be built into all elements of that plan, and that goes back to the children in homes that do not have high-speed internet or access to laptop technology. We have to have a recovery plan stakeholder group, which is what we're going to be talking about. And then we have to take, once we get kids in, it kind of transitions to, we have to be able to identify the gaps and say what we're going to do about it. We have to make sure that the Maryland College and Career Readiness Standards through pre-K through 12 are all being taught for all content areas. We have to make sure that we are following all of the federal law, IDEA, 504, the Rehabilitation Act, Title II, and ADA. We have to follow any procedures that they come up with from the Maryland Department of Health and from the Center for Disease Control, as well as our local health office. And that probably has been one of the greater challenges that we've all faced, because that seems to be a bit of a moving mark. We have to follow all the safety protocols for cleaning, for nutrition, everything. We have to follow the protocols for safe transportation of students to and from schools. Aha, put a pin in that. If we are to follow social distancing and PPE on school buses, we can only put eight to 12 kids on a bus. If we put a child on every single one of those seats, we can only fit 22 kids on a bus. If we put two kids on both of those seats all the way back, that's 44 kids on a bus. Please know upfront, we run our buses with 50 to 60 kids, because that's what we have to do, given the money that we have, given where we are with our budget. So that in itself, that first part is going to be really challenging within the plan. That's going to be the very first thing we have to decide on. It has to be approved, and we have to move forward, because how we get kids to school is going to determine what we can do with them when they're there. We have to have a tracking attendance thing, so we have to know where they are and whether they're learning virtually or they're in school. We're going to have to be able to track hours, because all of that is required through COMAR, through MSD. We have to have a communication plan, and that's really a challenge, because information comes from us, from press releases and our webpage and our emails, and we send things out through School Messenger, and there are Smore accounts, and there are Twitter and Facebook and all these, we send out all this information, but that's, it's overwhelming. And information that's sent out sometimes gets tracked in a different way. So that communication plan is exceptionally important. We have to do their COVID-19 checklist. That checklist is, I don't, there's a lot of things on that checklist. And then just at the end, all of interscholastic athletics, what's football going to look like, what's that, everything, all of that has to be done as well, and it has to align to everything, all the different governing bodies that oversee athletics. So where are we now? Safety Return School to School Planning Committee. We are, we have a, we've put together a committee of a whole bunch of different school system leaders. We have identified people within the system who will be contributing, and in the next several weeks, we're going to be inviting others in as well. We've got to look at all of this to put together a comprehensive plan. Each work group has two identified leaders, and then the identified leaders have a whole bunch of committee members, and then subcommittees that they're going to need. The best part, we can't meet face-to-face for any of this. So all of this has to be done through a Zooming kind of a medium, much like what you're seeing right now. That's really challenging. In education, we do our best work when we can get people in a room, and we can talk through problems, and we can get to a really good solution. Right now, as we have been for the last hundred and some days, we're forced to do all of this stuff virtually. So the plan that we are building, the structure that we've put together, because it is an overwhelming amount of things, and we can see it in the questions that are being asked. We're over, I think, 70 questions by now, right? So it's an over, you have so many questions. So what we've done is we've taken those 13 parts, and we've taken the COVID checklist, and we've taken a look at all of that, we've taken a look at the plan itself, and we basically said, we do what we do best. We're going to have four basic primary pillars of the return to work plan. The first pillar is going to be about teaching and learning, and how we evolved from Edgenuity and Imagine Learning to a much more interactive and engaging and flexible and fluid and upfront Zooming kind of environment for teaching. The second is, pillar two is services for students. Schools don't just deliver education. We deliver nutrition, we deliver counseling, we deliver health, we do a whole bunch of other things. So how are we going to continue all of those services if we aren't able to get together traditionally? The third pillar is supporting services. That's your buses and your technology and food service again, and maintenance and operations in the buildings themselves, all the things that have to be considered for those component pieces. And the last pillar is, how do we, how do we communicate that? How do we make sure that 18,000 students and 36,000 parents and guardians and the 2,100 employees all get the same message when we can't get together to talk? Across all those, we have to make sure that we are equitable in our decision. We have to make sure that we're providing the staff development for people to be able to deliver whatever we, whatever we decide on. And then the purpose of this and following work is going to be, how do we get input from students, teachers, parents, and stakeholders? So that first pillar, instruction, teaching and learning. Within that plan, we have to talk about what we're going to do for gaps, how we're going to make sure that anything we provide is completely and explicitly aligned, how we're going to make sure that we train staff to be able to do it, and then ultimately recognize that there are so many things that kids do in school that are, that are beyond the scope of Math, Science, English, and Social Studies. There's a whole host of other programming that we provide, and so how do we make sure that we're providing support for all of those different school programs? You're going to be hearing, those two screenshots are from the platform that we purchased. We were actually in negotiation to purchase before COVID sent us all reeling. It is a learning management system that is going to be, it's tied to all of the other student information systems that we have. It'll, I think it's going to be something that's really, really powerful for students and for parents. It's going to allow both to be able to understand exactly what we're doing within the classroom. It's a much more robust, it's like Google Classroom on steroids. It has the structure of Edgenuity with the flexibility to allow for teacher autonomy, but it is a gigantic lift. Right now, and for the last several weeks, month, month and a half, we have had our content supervisors figuring out how to build within Schoology every single course that we offer traditionally, that we'll be offering in the fall, and then taking the first marking period, the first quarter of that course, and fleshing out every single unit and every single week and every single daily lesson plan and every single assessment, formative and summative assessment, as well as all the instructional component pieces of materials that you're going to read or videos that you're going to see, and build that. Content supervisors are working with teacher teams, and that's the work that we're doing. We've started doing this month, and we'll be doing through July. So when we get to August, when we bring all the teachers back, they're going to have a brand-new platform to learn and to use. Professional development has been ongoing throughout the summer. And that platform has to really, the reason why we're choosing it is because it identifies three things. Consistency of instruction, so everybody is getting the same material, options for delivery. Schoology, once established, will be able to offer it virtually, in a blended classroom, and in face-to-face, because those are the three options that we're going to be faced with. Either we don't come back at all, and we have virtual education, or we come back for optional on-off days, something like that, or we're going to come back and have a traditional school day. We have to be prepared for all three of those options. And then ultimately, we have to make sure that whatever we build and deploy, it's engaging to students. The second pillar is for services for students. We have to figure out how we're going to be able to take attendance, both in-person and virtually. We have to figure out how we're going to comply with all of the educational mandates, Special Ed, 504, ADA. We have to figure out how we're going to continue to provide counseling and mental health services, because we have, we have counselors in each one of our schools, we have social workers in each one of our schools, we have psychologists who are spread throughout our schools, because that's an incredibly important part of educating the whole child. And then the last is, we have to coordinate everything we're doing with the health department. I've met many, 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 many times with Dr. Brewster as we work through plans for the school, as we work through plans for graduation, and as we're building this plan, it must be done in concert with the health department so they, so that we don't go down a planning path that ultimately won't be supported by our local health department. The third pillar is the supporting services. So how do we make sure that all of our schools are as clean and healthy as they can possibly be and comply with everything for be, and comply with everything from the Maryland Department of Health, the Centers for Disease Control, and our local health officers? We have to figure out how we're going to provide food and nutrition services. If we come back to school in a traditional way, that's easy, we're going to make the meals, but we can't serve them, quite probably, in a setting that we have where we have 300, 400, 500, 600 kids in a lunchroom. So, we're going to have to figure out how to, delivery of service, if we're in, even if we're in school, we've got to figure out how we're going to do that. Back to transportation, that's the piece that has to be settled first. Technology, as you probably have read online, or perhaps you watched in a video, or perhaps you've watched a board meeting, or perhaps you've been with your child themselves, technology. Technology is a gigantic issue. Parents perhaps have been able to make do during the end of this year, but really for us to be able to deliver equitable instruction, we have to get to one-to-one. We have to be able to provide each student a laptop, and that laptop has to be able to connect to the internet in some fashion, or we have to have some workaround. The cost is prohibitive. We have been talking about all of this. COVID money came down, and we're supposed to have all of this money, and we haven't seen any of it yet. So, the technology that we have right now is the technology that we have. We have had generous donations from individuals, from the state's attorney's office, and from the, from the county commissioners last week with $400,000. But that, that only goes so far. We're still millions of dollars short to get us to a one-to-one technology, and then ultimately talk about connections. And then we have to talk about what we're going to do for athletics and extracurricular activities in the fall and moving forward, as no matter what, we're going to have to reconsider the way in which we, in which we do each one of those things. The last pillar is organizational and system support. Go back to, how do we make sure that we're keeping everybody on board, and they understand what we're doing, and why we're doing, and how we're doing it? Because as much as there are a lot of people that want to help and get the message out, there are other people that sometimes mix the message, and we jump forward. So, we have to make sure that we're getting information out consistently, and that we're really utilizing the resources that we have. This is a challenge in St. Mary's County, all of you know that. We have, we have one newspaper that comes out once a week, and we have another newspaper that comes out twice a week, and you know, that's, that's a challenge. So, where you turn to get your information, that's got to be something that's clearly established. We are reformatting our school system webpage, and putting on the front button that will take you right to our recovery plan as we're walking through all of that. So, anybody watching, don't listen to a source over here, or listen to a source over here, go to the school system, we'll give you the information as we know it, and we'll try to do that in as real-time as we possibly can. Back, we have to create the most safe environments that we can throughout, throughout the schools, on our buses, working in concert with the local Health Department throughout the entire, throughout the entire county. Scheduling is going to be a gigantic piece of this. It's a challenge every year to schedule 18,000 kids. It's a challenge every year to build a master schedule for every single school. It requires a great deal of skill, and thought, and effort to make sure that the kids have what they want, when they want, and how they want it. This has just kind of thrown that, thrown that up. We're going to have to spend a lot of time about that. And then ultimately, we're going to have to make sure that we have staffing support, that we have support for our staff as we go through all of that, that's professional development as well. Communication, safe environments, flexibility, and adaptability. So, we have sought input already. We sent a letter home to all parents last week concluding the year, thanking you very much for all of the support that you've given us, and all of the incredible work that you've done within your home to help us get to the end of the school year. We asked a series of questions. You're going to receive more surveys, that's, that's, we're going to, because we don't know what you don't share. So, we're going to continue to survey. In the survey that we sent out last week, we've got about 4,000 responses. Okay? That's great. We've got 18,000 kids, we've got 36,000 parents and guardians. So, 4,000 isn't necessarily a representative sample, but of the 4,000 who did respond, and if you are watching and you did respond, thank you so much, please continue to give us information. We asked several, I'm going to just highlight this question in particular, and another one. If we continue learning at home, does your child have access? And from the people who responded, the majority said, yes, they do, but they don't have a great deal, some, a little bit of limited access. Now, those results could be called into question, because we sent it out via email, and they responded via web-based interface. So, yeah, they, yeah, that's, yeah, they, yeah. So, internet, to internet with Wi-Fi, again, people say they have access, but when we, when we actually launch the Schoology platform, it's not a static asynchronous going-through content, it is a dynamic video streaming in real-time platform that's going to require reliable internet, and quite probably, high-speed internet. And so, we're going to be taking, we're going to be taking a much more targeted survey of that as we work through the recovery plan. At the end of the year, we realized, we just concluded, we asked just, how are you feeling about a return next year, sending your child back to school every single day, right now, at that moment, in the last day of school, what are you thinking? And the response comes back pretty much balanced. A quarter of you are like, yeah, I want my kid to come back to school, and I'm comfortable with it. A quarter of you said, I'm mostly comfortable, I'm mostly comfortable, but I'm sure you're going to wait to see what the plan is, and to make sure that that's all work. Another quarter of you are, are a little comfortable, but you know, it's not, you know, there's, there's enough there, that's, I have a question, and 25, 23.7% of the people who responded, of the 4,000, said they're not comfortable at all. So, one of the things that we're going to have to build into this recovery plan and be ready for is, we have to plan for there being a significant portion of our school community, of our students and parents, who are going to elect, even if we do return to school somewhat traditionally, they may not want their children to be in that environment until we get to stage three. So, we have to build a platform, and a resource, and an option for those parents, so that they remain engaged with St. Mary's County Public Schools. So, we know we have a lot of work ahead of us. So, at this point, we're going to talk about, we're going to answer some questions, and if I look like I'm looking offstage, it's because I've got Dr. Jeffrey Marr right in front of me, who is manning the computer, and he's going through all of the questions, and I'm being joined over here, if we go to the second camera angle, whatever. I'm going to be joined by our Deputy Superintendent of Schools. If you don't know her, that's Dr. Maureen Montgomery, and she's helming the majority of these decisions, and instructional decisions, and she works with all the content supervisors, and Student Services, and Special Education, and all of the school principals. We're going to pull up on Zoom, if we could, some others as well. Let's see how, we'll see how well this works. I like doing this when, you know, on the fly, I think that makes it much more entertaining to see what works and what doesn't. So, we came up with the idea, I think, this morning, well, we'll have the, the other superintendent, the Assistant Superintendents, and the, and the Chief of Staff, we're going to have them Zoom in, and as we go through the questions, we'll be able to turn to them, and they'll be able to answer questions. So, we have everybody there, so if you look over there, you see that we have Ms. Tammy McCourt, she's our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and HR. We have our Assistant Superintendent of Supporting Services, that's Dr. Jeffrey Walker. We have our Chief of Staff, Mr. Dale Farrell oversees all the HR elements and staffing parts, and then we have our Chief of Safety and Security, Mr. Mike Wyant. So, we have four people. So, I have, we're going to call them the four phone lifeline friends, phone-a-friend kind of deal. If the questions are too hard, I'll look to them, and then we'll see if they can answer, or I'll turn to Dr. Montgomery and see if she can answer. Because I will tell you, that's, if it hasn't become clear, you are only as strong, your plan is only as good, as those who contribute to it. You have a really, you have a really great school system here, and you have a really great school system because you've got really great people who work every single day for your kids, from, from all aspects. The food service workers who made sure people were fed, the building service workers who made sure that the building stayed clean and ready to go, all of the supporting services and maintenance and operations, because construction projects have continued, all our safety assistants who came out to all of our events to support our kids, all the work that's being done by content supervisors to put together professional development for all of our staff, and ultimately, Ms. McCourt for figuring out and moving us forward productively through a really bumpy budget season, and to manage all of the different ways that money may be available for St. Mary's County Public Schools, because all of the money that people are saying is available, is available, but only by certain methods, and it's, there's no such thing as, there's no such thing as free money, or easy money, everything comes with a cost. So, with that, what we think we'll do is that Dr. Montgomery has questions, and, and I'm assuming that everybody can hear Dr. Montgomery.
Can you hear me? Yes? Mic is live? Okay.
Okay, great, so.
Two things first.
Okay.
I think we should do all of our town halls virtually, because you have over 600 viewers right now watching our town hall, and we haven't had as many people at our others when we've done them in person. So, the virtual thing works really well.
So, for all 600 who are here, please do us a small favor, and go back and watch the YouTube videos of all of our other town halls that we did throughout the fall, because we organized, we built a state, we had a stage, we had fantastic presenters coming in and talking about the things that concern us most, because even though COVID right now is what we're all talking about, all the elements of this plan that we have to address, those are, those are things that we have to address every single day with kids. So, go back and watch some of those, and we will look at a virtual, I think a virtual works really well.
If that works for families, great.
We just want to, we just want to get information out, we want to get the right information out to you, and do it in as direct a way as possible. So, with that, Dr. Montgomery, let's.
One more thing?
Oh, one more thing, sorry.
One more thing. So, we do have more than 70 questions that have been posed to us so far, so if we don't get, we won't get to all of them today. So, we will post a frequently asked questions document on our webpage, so people can access, and we'll have answers in there.
So, everybody who found their way, and we'll tweet it out, and we'll Facebook it out, and it'll be on the homepage of the school system, so go to the landing page for all of that. I will tell you that I read some of the questions ahead of time, and thank you very much for those people who are not posing questions, more making statements. And while I love the fact that they have personally held very strong opinions, if it's not a question, I'm not sure we're going to be addressing it today. Some of those statements were statements, and a lot of it's, a lot of it was politically charged. And, and at the end of the day, we're the school system, we're apolitical, we work for your kids. So, with that, what's a good question? What do you want to start with?
So, good question. If online instruction is used in the fall, will it be more interactive?
And I think that that came in a little bit before we, before I started talking. And that really is, that's, that's where we have to be. If we find ourselves needing to be virtual, or to have a virtual option for parents who elect to have their children learn virtually in the fall, we have to have a platform that is robust, that is interactive, and that is engaging, and that's, that's what we're building right now with Schoology. The, the platform is, it's, it's really, it's really neat. Dr. Marr and I yesterday had about an hour-long Zoom with our, with Slack Kids, the Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Committee, the Steering Group, and we previewed some of Schoology with them, because that's what they want to know. They want to know what the fall's going to look like, what's instruction going to look like, what, what's that, what's that whole thing going to be? And so, Schoology gives us a, gives us a great platform for that. We will be putting a lot more information out about Schoology as we go through the summer. The, the challenge is, a lot of the professional development and the front-facing parts for, for students and parents, you have to build the system before you can preview it. So, we could show you, you can go to Schoology right now, and if you, and if you read the letter that I sent to you, and you followed the clicks, there were like two-minute videos that showed you an overview of what Schoology is in a very topical, light way, but more specific professional development and information will be coming forth with Schoology as we build the platform and get ready for September.
So, Dr. Smith, we had several questions about meeting students' social, emotional, and mental health needs. So, how has the school system addressed the social, emotional, and mental health needs of students during this period of school closure?
All right, lots of, and that's, and it's, social, emotional, and mental health needs of, of our students, and of our parents, and of our staff. Everybody, you know, this is an exceptionally stressful and fraught time. So, if you go back, and here's a great thing to do, again, I'm, I was a teacher for a very long time, there's a lot of homework. So, one of your things that you can do for homework is, if they went back and watched the board meeting.
June 10.
From June 10th, they will see an in-depth presentation from Cheryl Long, the Supervisor of Student Services, that outlines all of the different components that we have to support students, and how we have been moving that to a virtual environment over the last several months, and then ultimately, how we plan on continuing that in the fall for whatever may come. We absolutely recognize that central to our mission to educate children is to meet the social and emotional needs of students. You have to, you have to be ready to learn to learn, and so, we definitely know that that's a priority, and that's going to be a huge component of the return-to-school plan as well, especially when we get into the equity part of that.
And, and there were, you know, just, just taking the opportunity to direct people to our webpage, where we do have many resources that are in the community, that parents can access. Of course, it's been a challenge when we don't have kids right in front of us, that we want to, you know, we can read their emotions, and see what's going on in their lives every day, and we don't have that ability, so, but we have had our school psychologists, and we've had our social workers, and we've had our guidance counselors that have had the ability to make contact with students and with families. They have provided a virtual, virtual teleconferencing options with kids for individuals when there were struggles, they provided resources to parents. So, we're here, and when we've know, when we know there's an issue, when we know you need some support in something, we will do what we can to support you, and provide any type of assistance and resources. So, go to our website, look for the people that you can make contact with, contact your school, let your principal know, let your child's teacher know, and then we'll, we'll take it from there to give you the resources that you need.
And I believe that's also a big button right on our homepage, smcps.org, it's right there. Great.
Okay, so, what is the likelihood of returning to in-person school in the fall, and will parents and staff be given an option to continue virtually?
Yeah, and again, I think that's the, the return-to-school, the safe return-to-school plan, that is, that's got to be an integral component of that. I do think that no matter what happens, first of all, I understand that decision's got to come from the state superintendent, working with the governor, to say that schools may reopen, and then it comes down to us to make sure that we're in compliance with all of theirs, and we have a plan moving forward. I think that realistically, there are definitely going to be parents who want options for virtual learning in the fall, and it's our responsibility as a school system to be able to provide that. That's what we're working on right now. So, I think that the greatest, one of the most powerful things we can do for parents and students is to offer choice. So, the plans that we put forth, there's going to be choice in them as, as a, as a central part.
Okay, there seem to be questions about disparities between counties as to school resources provided, so other counties provided laptops and hotspots, and had teacher-led classes, so do you know, can you talk about the disparities between counties?
Yeah, I, well, the easiest way to do that is to go to the MSD-E site and pull down the report for per pupil expenditures by county. And you'll see that there's 24 LEAs, and St. Mary's County consistently hits at the bottom four or five. All of those resources cost an inordinate amount of money, millions and millions and millions of dollars to be able to provide that kind of resource. And the, the, to be able to provide a streaming experience where a teacher can stream into a home, that teacher has to have that technology and that high-speed internet at home, and the system then has to be responsible for providing a laptop that can connect to a high-speed internet to be able to do it. That inequity, and inconsistency between counties is, has to be built into the plan, we have to talk about that. We have to talk about what we're going to do with our students.
Okay, there were some questions in the chat about special needs students. So, my child has special needs that require therapies in class, as of now, they're only being met virtually. When can we expect the children who have needs that can't be met properly online to resume in-person therapy?
Again, and that's the, that's the second pillar of the recovery plan, that's going to be support for students, and that's under IDEA, and 504, and ADA, all of that has to be built into the plan and planned for. And, and let's be completely honest, there are, there are elements of education and student support that can only be provided face-to-face, and so those are the things that we're going to have, we're going to have to address. That's going to be a great, that's going to be a great deal of work. Next time we have a Find a Friend, we're going to have Scott Serbiak.
Scott Serbiak.
Next time we have a Find a Friend, we're going to have Scott Serbiak. We're going to, we're going to swap out these faces with Scott Serbiak and some others so they can, isn't there one about, isn't there one that we can ask about safety? Or something about supporting services?
Actually, there, there, there is. Yes, yes.
Okay.
So let's see. So should students return to full-time in-person classes in the fall? What is the plan going forward to promote social distancing in hallways, cafeterias, recess, buses? How are we going, oh, actually, it's, I'm sorry, it's not for that. But how will wearing a mask be enforced in the school environment, both on the bus and in the school building?
Yeah, that's a, well, so to answer that, it's Dr. Montgomery, Student Services, the Superintendent, the Board of Education, the Assistant Superintendent for Supporting Services, and the, the Chief of Safety and Security. All, that's a whole bunch of, that's a whole bunch of, that's a whole bunch of stuff. The masks in particular is going to be a real challenge. When we look around and we see the example being set by adults, and when we're going to carry that expectation to children, we're going to have to have a lot of, we're going to have to have a lot of work with our children and their parents as far as the importance of wearing a mask, not for yourself, but for, for others. Obviously, we're seeing the effects of that across the United States right now.
And we'll have to do some work with our kids, just teaching them, and teaching them the importance of it, and going through safety protocols with them, and starting with our very littlest people.
Right.
And teaching them the importance of wearing the masks at school and educating our kids and educating our families. We're all about making sure that we give the reason and the justification, and hopefully we don't have to turn things into discipline issues. That's never what we want to do. We just want people to be safe and be considerate of the other people around them. So we're going to be working through that for quite a, quite a while.
Yeah. I think that it's easy to have people follow rules if they understand and agree with the reason for the rule. So anybody who doesn't understand the reason behind wearing a face mask at this point, we're probably going to need a lot of time, we need, we're going to need a lot of time to, to help them understand their, their responsibility. The way I see it right now, we're in stage two, and now this is a time for personal responsibility. You know, you, you now have options before you. You personally have to be responsible for what you will do or won't do, or what situation you're going to find yourself in. That's really important, and that's something that is a component, a central component of working with our children, is understanding their own personal responsibility. So boy, we're going to have a lot of, we're going to have a lot of opportunity for lessons and learning on that.
So what would we say to parents who are considering, considering withdrawing their children from public education in the fall?
Yeah. Under no circumstances whatsoever should you withdraw your student from St. Mary's County Public Schools. We're going to be able to provide a virtual learning environment for your child, and it will be better than any off-the-shelf program that you're going to buy and do. It will be articulated to the Maryland State Standards. It will be taught by our teachers. It will be overseen by our staff. It will be supported by our special education and support staff. It will be, you know, this is not a time that you should turn your back on the, the most comprehensive set of resources that are available to kids.
So this is a finance question from Ms. McCourt.
All right.
Are you ready, Ms. McCourt? Will we have the money available to provide a one-to-one computer support for all of our students should we go virtual in the fall? And who, who, where should we turn to to get information about that?
We're certainly working on every avenue possible. We have CARES Act grant funding. Esser Grant was just approved by MSDE last week. That will provide some resources. We had some budgetary savings this school year as a result of the school closures that provide additional resources, but we are still shy of what we need. We still need more monies to support one-to-one.
Yeah. And, and if you want a more detailed plan of that, you can go and you can watch two different board meetings where we put forth a whole comprehensive plan of what it would take to get to one-to-one, as well as where we are with funding resources, specifically the, the stabilization, the education stabilization fund that came out of CARES. That's what Dr., that's what Tammy McCourt is just referring to. It's just been approved. It's over $2 million. It's going to get us almost 7,000 computers, but we haven't ordered them yet. We won't be placing the order until next month, right?
We'll be placing the order on July 1st.
On July 1st. So we get into the new fiscal year, we'll be placing the order. There aren't machines available, the delivery date right now for the ones that we just ordered as a result of budgetary savings and through the generous donation from the state's attorneys and from individuals and from the county commissioners. Those machines that were, that were just ordered, the delivery, Dr. Walker, the, I'm going to let Dr. Walker talk. Dr. Wa, Dr. Walker wants the delivery date on those.
Uh, we're, so the first batch of computers are being delivered now. The next batch is a September delivery date. So we're looking at a delayed timeline for delivery of any machines that we, that we order from Carolina.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a challenge. Okay. But yeah, so we're, every, every dollar we find is going to be put toward purchasing machines to get us to a one-to-one and be able to hand children a laptop that they can go home and they can do their work on. Whether we, whether we come back in person, or we do it blended, or we do it virtually, we're moving toward that being the instructional delivery device outside of the school. Oh, hey, we're, just so you know, we're up to, we're up to 56 minutes. We're going to have to cut it short and, and, well, pretty soon. So how about one last, is there one really great question?
Uh, will there be, will there be football or other sports in the fall?
Baseball's starting, right? So baseball's starting. I can tell you that in stage two, there has been a great deal of discussion, and we are moving forward with athletic conditioning at our schools in the next several weeks moving forward. I don't know. I don't know if there's going to be football in the fall. The, the, that's the heartbreaking part of where we are. We had to forego so many things that bring us the great joy and fulfillment of being involved with your kids, the conclusion of the year, the promotion ceremonies, the school performances, the concerts, all, we, we lost an entire sporting season. That's, that's, that's a real challenge, that schools aren't just English and math and science and social studies and CTE and all that. It's just, it's, it's so much more. We are a community that really comes out and supports and engages and celebrates and enjoys children, and we hope that we can get to stage three quickly because stage three is, is where we have resumption of these larger gathered groups. I know that the kids, the class of 2020, they're still waiting on their proms.
They are.
They're still waiting on their proms. And so, you know, we'll have to see. So with that, I'm getting the, I'm getting the one-minute mark from Dr. Marr. Please continue to add questions. We are not going to draw down the site. All the questions asked will be forwarded to the appropriate group within the Recovery Task Force. Assuming that we get feedback that this format kind of worked, we're going to look to do virtual town halls, not next week, but then moving forward probably bi-weekly so we can get information out. And as we move forward with the Recovery Task Force, and we have the individual leads who are working on each one of those groups, we're going to want to be able to pull them together to give an update to the community on where we are for each one of those decisions. As always, as new information comes to us from the governor or the state superintendent, we will be communicating directly to parents to let them know what the impact is educationally for their children. I want to end by thanking all those who have tuned in and for engaging and participating, and I look forward to having an opportunity to hear your comments and, and questions as, as we move forward. I like the fact that it's Maryland together, we are all together. And, and as I ended, I can't remember which one I ended something with, you know, we have to lead with hope, not fear, and, and our kids rely on us to be the, the dealers of hope. And so it is with great hope that we will move forward with all of our work, and I just thank you very much.